Item number 14. Item number 14 has to do with ordinances and action items. That is, the consideration of conducting a first reading of an ordinance amending municipal code, Chapter 2.84, related to our environmental review committee. This was continued from June 21st. Our presenter for item number 14 is Chris Jensen, our city attorney. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Are you able to see my screen on Zoom?
Not yet, but I think perhaps we are now.
Okay, great. So, thank you. So, as the mayor's introduction mentioned, this is an ordinance to amend Chapter 2.84 of the municipal code. And that ordinance establishes the environmental review committee. It was initially adopted in 1990, has been amended one or two times since then. And the function of the environmental review committee is to review discretionary projects that are not categorically exempt to determine if an EIR is required for the project. And the current composition of the committee, you'll see on the screen, it's one council member, one planning commissioner, and then three staff members appointed by the city manager, the public works director, and the community development director. And that structure of having an advisory committee that has both elected and appointed officials and staff members who report to the city manager is unusual. So, when the council held its workshop on commissions and committees earlier this year in February, one of the things that was discussed was the environmental review committee. And at that time, council directed staff to prepare an amendment to Chapter 2.84 to change the composition of the ERC to two members of the city council and one planning commissioner. And it also referred amendments to the committee jurisdiction to the ERC. So, this agenda item addresses that first bullet point of the referral. And the proposed ordinance is included in your agenda packet, and the recommended action here is to adopt that ordinance and approve modifying the composition of the environmental review committee to consist of two council members and one planning commissioner. And I will be available for any questions after council takes public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris, and we'll take that public comment. We have two hands raised from the public, one from Connie Cunningham, one from Jennifer, and now one from JR Fruen. I'll remind our members of the public that you'll need to have your hand raised after the first person is done speaking in order to be heard on this item. And then that also goes for people that are emailing in comments to cityclerk@cupertino.org, all one word for city clerk, as well as submitting any blue cards in person. And so Connie, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members and city manager. I am Connie Cunningham, a 34-year resident and housing commissioner, but speaking for myself only. I think it is not a good idea to make this change to the ERC. Also, I recommend that all ERC meetings be on video recordings, as are city council and planning commissions. These meetings touch on many aspects of the city, and decisions will impact the timing and the cost of projects. I attended an ERC meeting on May 19th. Agenda item number two addressed a mitigated negative declaration on a property that proposed to add a few homes. The recommended action was for the ERC to consider the MND as the appropriate environmental review document for that project. I took notes of what I heard that morning. Planning Commissioner Scharf asked what the justification was for not doing more soil samples around the whole site. He was advised that staff had followed professional written guidance. Commissioner Scharf was not convinced with that answer. He stated that he thought the borings may have been done in such a way to avoid finding contamination. That was a bold and shocking assertion, I thought. Councilmember Moore said she would prefer an updated EIR. She asked several questions and stated her opinion that the site description was not accurate. The property owner answered the questions supporting the documentation. Councilmember Moore said she would perform more testing. The outside panelist, Nick Papani from Rainy Planning, stated that the MND would be appropriate even with additional soil sampling. Commissioner Scharf then stated his preference to do the additional borings in advance, before more work was done, which is reverse order from normal practice. Councilmember Moore said that doing the borings then earlier would speed up the process. The motion was made that the MND is appropriate with direction to do additional soil testing and any additional work before going to planning commission. There was a big discussion about samples all over the property or following written guidance. Commissioner Scharf and councilmember Moore both stated that they do not, excuse me, trust any judgment-driven choice of sites. A substitute motion by councilmember Moore was that this item be continued, pending soil testing. And that was seconded. Then there was a great big discussion about all this stuff, and it finally ended up that the first motion went over the substitute. The first motion being to accept the MND with doing some extra work as had been described. Given the opinions that Commissioner Scharf and councilmember Moore do not trust experts in the field or the processes by which environmental decisions are made by other agencies, I think it's important to keep more people in the loop, especially experienced staff. Because this included the vice chair and the director of public works, Matt Morley, and included the director of community development, Benjamin Foo, and the assistant city manager, Diane Thompson. So, I just think that we need more people rather than fewer at such an important choke point in the decision process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Connie. Our next speaker is Jennifer, followed by JR Fruen, and those are the hands that are up in the Zoom function. So, welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little bit concerned about there only being three people on the environmental review committee. It has, I've been going to the meetings probably since 2003, right after we annexed. And there have always been at least five members there of staff and various different city council, planning commission, et cetera. And, you know, that spans a good time. That's 20 years. And I actually sat through the environmental review committee for the entire Apple project of the campus two. That went through, I've been through several Valco, pre-Valco, the previous owner. And I'm not sure how you want to make up the composition, but I think there needs to be at least five people. And I think, I know staff may not consider this to be something that they should be involved with. I can understand that. But I do think that since there, especially in the Apple Campus Two situation, there was a lot of input from public works, et cetera, on this. It was a big project. You can have small projects, you can have big projects. But when you come to voting on things like this, having more people is better. You get, and I think it is very, I know Connie had mentioned that people had questioned, I don't remember, I'm trying to think what this ERC meeting was a couple months ago. But people need to ask questions. We have a new housing bill, AB 2011, by Buffy Wicks, which is attempting to allow construction in commercial zones by right ministerially without using SEQA. And it scares the living daylights out of me. We have tech parks that have contamination in them. My brother worked at a site in the 1970s, which is now a super fun site in Mountain View. So, however you make your composition, we need at least four to five people, and a better mix is a better mix. But to me, I will say right now, I am glad that when we were doing the Apple Campus Two, we did not have this onslaught of housing bills. Because to me, the housing bills are muddying the water. They are trying to override local control, which is the heart of, it is protecting residents of this state from environmental damage and contamination. So, the more eyes you have on the ERC committee, the better. Yes, Cupertino may be one of the few cities that have something like this, but I'm a firm believer that there was a reason that our forefathers in this city did something like this, and maybe we need to go back and look at it. But I am glad to be in Cupertino because we are one of the best cities. We take pains and we examine, and the hard questions will then be answered.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next and final speaker on Zoom is JR Fruen. Welcome, JR.
Thank you, Mayor Paul, councilmembers. I'd ask that you reject tonight's change, the composition of the ERC. I'm not really clear on what the problem is that this change seeks to solve, and I think that removing staff from the ERC removes essential expertise from its decisions. Experienced professionals in the field who constantly deal with subject matter relevant to SEQA will provide more consistent decisions over time. And by contrast, the expertise of councilmembers and their appointees will vary dramatically over time. So, reconstituting the ERC entirely with elected officials and their political appointees risks transforming what is a very and highly technical determination of this particular committee into a politically motivated one. One that's governed by who happens to be on the city council at any given time, one that's correspondingly more open to corruption and to arbitrary and capricious decisions. I'd also underscore that risk from making the incorrect choice to impose a full environmental impact report when the record supports a mitigated negative declaration would also rise if AB 2656 passes in its current form. Under that bill, imposing a full EIR process on certain housing projects otherwise eligible for an MND would trigger the remedies and penalties available under the Housing Accountability Act. That bill sailed through the Assembly on a 68 to 3 vote, and it has passed all its Senate policy committees. It looks like it's on a sheer and clear path to passage. In short, I think that you constrain risk and provide democratically accountable balance by maintaining the current composition of this committee, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, are there any blue cards or any emails to your email account during this time?
No, Mayor, there are not.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's take this back up to council. I'm going to go ahead and take any questions from our Zoom council members, councilmembers Willie or Wei. Are there any questions? Councilmember Wei.
Yes, I have a couple questions. I've been reading the packages, actually it was on the agenda last time, we didn't get to it, so this on the agenda again today. And if I may, it looks like all the other cities who have an ERI, you know, committee, they actually are, consist of staff with expertise. Among cities and counties in California that have committees with a jurisdiction focused on environmental review process, the standard composition is a committee of staff members appointed from different departments. No cities or counties identified rely on a committee with membership such as two council members plus a planning commissioner. I have to agree with Jennifer and JR and too, that, you know, having just three people who may or may not have the expertise, councilmembers change and, you know, planning commissioner change, and that, you know, that has a lot of consequences. And without staff's expertise, I'm afraid that's, that committee is not going to function very well. And I do, I am, and this is a question for our city attorney, that I understand this could affect a project, whether, you know, how deep an environmental impact report that is. A lot of municipal codes like this is to prevent council from being lobbied or council corruption. With just three people on it, it really, I have a question on that. What if, you know, a council member or two councilmembers being lobbied or expanded? I think staff's expertise is very important to this committee. So, Chris, I think my question for you is, if it's just the three of them, would we risk the committee members being lobbied or exploited, you know, make decisions that's not quite technically based, but more politically or something else based?
So, you know, I think that the risk of lobbying, I mean, you know, or just the, you know, in some cases, the reality of lobbying is present regardless of the composition of the committee. But, you know, certainly there's, some councilmembers are going to have more, you know, technical knowledge than others. That's probably true among staff as well. But I see the risk as lobbying as being present, you know, regardless of the composition of the committee, and the city does have disclosure requirements for that that mitigate that risk to a certain extent.
Thank you, city attorney. So, I am very uncomfortable with just three committee members on this very important committee.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. Let's go to, let me see if there are other hands raised here. So, I see that Vice Mayor Chow has her hand raised, and Councilmember Moore, did you want to speak on this? Vice Mayor Chow.
So, I have a question. Councilmember could be lobbied, the staff could be lobbied also, right? Especially they have worked with the applicant. So, there could be, I mean, like you said, it doesn't really matter what's the composition. That risk is there.
Yeah. So, you know, having discussions with project applicants is a normal part of the land use application process. I think that happens with both councilmembers and staff. There are certain, certain of those contacts have to be disclosed under our lobbying ordinance. But I think, you know, I think it is, it's a normal part of the process for an applicant to want to have conversations with decision makers in this situation.
And that, the same applies to planning commission and the city council. Yeah.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Another question is, regardless of the composition, I assume that all the expert staff will still be attending the meeting and providing their expertise as they have been doing for planning commission and council meeting. And whoever is on the committee will have the benefit of that, right?
Yeah. So, I haven't, I don't know if we've had a discussion at the staff level of how these, this committee would be staffed, but I would expect that staff will continue to prepare reports for the meeting and provide recommendations to whatever the committee's composition is.
And that their decision, there is specific legal requirement on what they have to rely on to make decision, and evidence has to be there. Those are, those still applies.
Yes, those still apply. So, and so they would get professional guidance from planning staff, and of course, legal advice from the city attorney's office.
Okay. So, it seems then, the concern regarding membership, so Chris, you mentioned that the current composition with some councilmember, one councilmember, one planning commission, and some staff. This is the only committee that's like that in Cupertino, and you mentioned that's uncommon? That's not recommended? Could you clarify a bit?
Well, I don't know about not recommended, and I couldn't say that it's unique, but I would say that it's unusual to have a, an advisory body that's set up to have both elected and appointed officials and staff members on it.
So, staff usually is in an expert role of providing any necessary expertise on the matter?
Yeah, yes, when, yes, when there's a commission or committee making a decision like this, which is also somewhat unusual, but not unheard of.
Okay. Yeah. So, a three-member committee, that means two of the member, if two councilmembers, they can't discuss this issue. So, one possibility I'm thinking is, it could be, we can add one member from sustainability commission, so it's a four-person committee, then two of the members can still, might still consult with each other on certain issue result being a quorum. Just wondering about that, what other people think. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. In terms of the current composition of our environmental review committee, we do have a mix between staff people, councilmember, planning commissioner. And so, if we were to do nothing this evening, that mixture of composition would maintain, correct, Mr. City Attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. And then, nothing stops us from maintaining that mixture between staff and elected officials and an appointee, correct? I mean, we can add, for instance, the city manager or the director of planning or whatnot to the proposed three people that are contemplated under this recommendation. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, there's been a mixture of staff and appointed and elected officials since 1990, so.
Right, right. I just, you know, I hear what people are saying with regard to expertise and influence, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, you know, when you become an elected official and are assigned to all these various roles, you essentially are taking on the task of representation and decisional authority for any number of items that require expertise to understand. And there's that fundamental role of understanding how to use the experts that are there. And that's by nature why we have recommended actions, as well as the preparation of various items on an agenda by professional staff people. So, you know, I see that as a, something that's implicated in virtually every item that you run across in the public process. But, you know, one thing I will say, as the original maker of the motion in February, I did have as the intent, perhaps that wasn't necessarily communicated in the ultimate language of the motion or how it was being interpreted, simply to change the composition of the five by adding a councilmember and essentially taking one of the staff people and having the utility of their expertise, but not necessarily putting them on the committee as a voting member. So, that was my intent in putting this together. I didn't contemplate this, having fewer people. I actually contemplated it having the identical amount of people. And, you know, having been on the environmental review committee multiple years in the past, I feel that having representatives from the public and having a couple of the electeds, as well as appointed, you know, presumably when you appoint a planning commissioner, there is, you know, an interview process. And with regard to taking a look at what the corpus of the work and experience is, there's at least that kind of experience with planning. And when I was evaluating the nature of the communication and the dialogue over time, it just seemed to me that there would be more of a representative perspective from the public if we were to add another councilmember there. And I just wanted to make sure that we were to enhance quality of the discussion. And it is true, and honestly, I sometimes get frustrated, you know, with, you know, the granularity of our discussions. But in the end, when I step back, I'm also very grateful for the ability to have this kind of conversation with colleagues on an ongoing basis for many of our items. So, I would expect that this would foster better discussion, frankly. And if we were to translate the work that we've been doing as a council over time, we would be able to actually kind of motivate more of this thorough examination. Because a lot of the times, if you feel that, you know, there hasn't been necessarily as much examination, I also actually, you know, to speak to the member of the public that's, that was reciting, you know, kind of a litany of actions that had taken place in the former prior ERC meeting, I actually listened in on that ERC meeting as well. I didn't participate, of course, but I thought there were some really good points raised, right? I mean, just in terms of the, you know, the need to evaluate areas that, you know, perhaps hadn't been looked at as thoroughly. And if you looked at the various details, some of the usages of this space had been quite possibly along the lines of things that would introduce environmental contaminants. And so, I think, you know, personally, I'm comfortable with reexamining the composition, and I'd be happy to, if that were the majority sentiment, add a couple of our staff members in as part of the committee and the immediate conversation. But I think we have at our, at our resources, you know, in addition to staff, you know, consultants as well, that the ERC can continue to draw upon. And so, I see Councilmember Moore with a hand raised. Councilmember Moore, would you like to weigh in on this at this point?
Sure. So, I've served on the ERC since 2019, and I think I started chairing it in 2019 as well. There had never been a training session for the ERC members, and that was something that I requested and we had implemented because our chief role is to weigh in on whether an MND or a negative declaration or an EIR would be the appropriate SEQA document for a project. And so, we had, actually, the attorneys came in and provided a kind of a tutorial. And then, we, later on, they provided that also for some of the members of council as well. And it was very helpful. But that year, we had a discussion about what the ERC could look at, because there were some questions about, can we look at projects outside of Cupertino, such as Lehigh? Or what if there's a really large project on one of our neighboring cities that's coming and it's going to impact us? So, the original idea to, was to change the scope of the ERC so that we would be able to look at these projects which impact the city, which otherwise we wouldn't be able to, that there just wasn't a mechanism to, and that we could recommend to council that you would, if there was a large project and you saw some environmental impacts that were of concern, that because we were essentially more interested as a body in those topics, that we could recommend to council that a letter be written to address these things which we had seen. So, that was, that was kind of the start of it. And it wasn't, to my knowledge, it wasn't a recommendation or suggestion to change the composition at that point. It was simply to change what we were going to be looking at. And as time has moved on, there was, there was a meeting, gosh, I think it was last year, where some of staff wanted to change the composition of the ERC. And that's where that discussion turned from, let's see what the scope is, into, let's change who's on it and remove staff. So, that changed. And then, if you do look historically at what the ERC has done for actions, if you look, for instance, the ERC review of the Valco EIR back in 2018, it was, that was not a matter of looking into the MND and EIR, it was actual review of the EIR. So, I thought that was an action which is not, since I've been on the committee, we have been very strictly following the municipal code for what our duties are. So, when this ERC suggestion came about, and I saw it on the agenda, I was quite surprised to see the three-person committee suggestion, and I felt that it was, it was too few. And I, there was, there are comments from the public that I'm not sure I'm kind of allowed to address under the circumstances here, but with regards to the McClellan project, I would direct the public to look at the images and read the whole report and consider the statements which were made. to look at the images and read the whole report and consider the statements which were made. For instance, regarding where there was, it was said that there was impervious areas. If you look at the photograph, if you go visit the site, you can tell that it's clearly, the pavement's worn away, it's no longer impervious, those sorts of things. And there was an underground storage tank which was removed without any documentation. And we can also look at, for example, the importance of having residents and council members putting another set of eyes on these documentation is part of why Valco is having the mitigations and remediation that they are. It's because people have taken the time to go read these documents and question. And the reason is, is that we have an obligation to protect the health and the safety and the welfare of the residents and the construction workers and the people that are going to be on these sites. And it is something to be taken seriously. So when members of the public are suggesting corruption, I would really hope that you consider what you are suggesting pretty carefully. So with regards to the three members of the ERC, I do think that's too few. I'm not sure about the changed composition, whether it's a three-two with council members and planning commissioner and a couple of staff members or flipped over the other way. With regards to this particular project that was mentioned with the auto storage barn and the dirt floor and all that, and not persuading the majority to request more soil testing, have it understood, though, the way the process works is that that report will next go to the planning commission and, you know, the question can be raised again. And then it will move on to the city council and that question can be raised again. So we have some checks and balances within the system, which I think work very well. So these issues, these concerns will get vetted again to make sure, like I said, that the health and the safety and the welfare of the residents and the construction workers is maintained and taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. And Vice Mayor Chow, I do see your hand is raised. At the same time, I would like to visit the composition provision of the proposed code here. So let me go ahead and see if I can share my screen here before we head back to you, Vice Mayor Chow. So I'm looking at the agenda packet here. So Chapter 2.84.10 talks about the establishment of the composition. You can see the crossouts over what was the original, or what is the current code, I should say. ERC shall consist of two council, or rather, one city council person. The double underline is what is being proposed to add. So it would be one city council person, one planning commissioner. And then the stuff that's crossed out is what's in there right now. The city manager, the director of public works, and the director of community development are their designated alternates. You know, I think if a modification is made, it should be made conservatively such that you have the city manager still in there and either the director of public works or the director of community development at the city manager's discretion or designated alternates. So I think essentially what was being suggested was a very slight tweaking, still a five-member composition, but together with the staff members, but essentially two out of three of the ones that are designated. So that was, you know, hopefully, clear enough now in terms of, you know, what I was contemplating when suggesting this change. So at this point, let me try to propose a motion to that effect and see if there could be a second. So based upon that description, City Attorney Jensen, is that clear enough with regard? I don't want to wordsmith the language of the proposed code. Would it make more sense to propose a motion for this comeback for a first reading later? Because of course, we wouldn't have the, you know, specific language unless you feel comfortable, you know, proceeding in that regard.
Yeah, no, I would recommend having this come back for a first meeting if council wants to give further direction on what the composition of the committee is. That should be enough, and I could make conforming changes elsewhere in the ordinance.
Okay, okay. So I guess that's clear. So let's see if we can have a second for that as a motion to provide staff direction accordingly. And so let me look to Vice Mayor Chow, since you had your hand raised. Would you be willing to second that for the purposes of our further discussion at this point?
Further discussion, okay.
Okay, great. So why don't I yield the floor to you? I know you had your hand raised and wanted to further comment here.
So I was surprised as Councilmember Moore also because I thought in our starting session, the idea is we would modify the role of ERC. And then I would have liked to see that ERC is, should really, maybe could be renamed the Environmental Protection Committee. It shouldn't be limited only to, right now, it's all discretionary approval project. But as we know, there are streamlined projects like Valco. And then there are state laws continuing to try to waive CEQA for projects. So waiving CEQA does not make the environmental impact go away. Therefore, I think this kind of project should still be within the scope of this Environmental Review Committee to review. Because as we have seen with Valco, even without CEQA, there are still environmental issues that they have to comply with and go through with the county, right? There are other levels that's beyond CEQA. And the Environmental Review Committee can help bring transparency and accountability to this process. And as Councilmember Moore mentioned, the Lehigh issue, it's beyond Cupertino, but it has big impact on Cupertino residents. And so if this committee could serve as Environmental Protection Committee looking at issues that affect Cupertino residents' health, I think that would be a worthwhile edit. As for the membership, I really don't have a strong opinion on that. Right now, there is one at-large member that's appointed by the chair.
It's a non-voting member, Councilmember.
It's a non-voting member, okay. But I'm curious, how come historically it's the city manager, who may or may not be expert in environmental issues? And even the designees, we don't know. And public works director may or may not know all the environmental code that a project needs to comply with. So I don't know whether there is any knowledge of why the current composition was chosen.
You know, I think the person to refer to that would be our City Attorney, to the extent that you've done any research on that origin of the original Environmental Review Committee charter. I don't know personally why it was a hybrid between the elected, the appointed, as well as the three staff members.
Yeah, no, I didn't, there's not easy access to staff reports dating back quite that far. So I didn't look at that. You know, I did look at the current, you know, current practices in other jurisdictions in California. And there was nothing that I could find that was similar.
Interesting. Okay. So I would hope this would come back with direction to actually modify the role so that this committee does not only the discretionary approval projects for EIR purposes. So if Councilmember Moore has any suggestion, I'm happy to entertain.
Well, let me go to Councilmember Willie at this time, who has a hand raised. And then Councilmember Moore, I believe that you wanted to speak. So Councilmember Willie.
Thank you, Mayor. First, a slight qualifier. So since I haven't been on the ERC, I can't really say I've seen or feel this or that is directly needed, a change. But I think it's important for the community to kind of see all five of us are weighing in on these decisions that are going to affect our community. If I take it from kind of the top down, you know, or at least how I consider it, you know, the importance of the impacts to our community, health, safety, that includes workers, you know, things, contamination, underground tanks, things of that nature. I do feel that those types of issues do need, you know, city council and hopefully the respective commission person to be involved in that, to make sure that things, you know, are not overlooked or missed. Does it need to have two councilmen? I'm not really thinking that I'm hearing enough evidence to make it a change, the importance of that. Now we look at the other members on the commission, you know, public works directors, designees, I feel that's pretty important. I'd also say the community development director's appointee is pretty important. And based on what I think is relevant history, when I've been on subcommittees for which we need city staff time, I've found that if they're not part of the committee, our access to them is significantly limited. And the importance of what we need is not of the same importance as their normal work. And so I realize this is a subcommittee reference, but here we are with a particular task that we feel is important to the community. Here's our concerns, our questions, we feel we need answers to. We need staff to do those types of things. And if they are part of the committee, I feel they're going to be more involved in getting those respective answers rather than the delays that I've experienced in the past. I realize that everybody is very busy. So I'm not wanting it to come across wrong. I just want to say that the composition, the respective people, their role in the respective committee that we're talking about, I see that the current composition feels good to me. Maybe there is a better composition. I'm not convinced I'm hearing it tonight. I usually like to be conservative. Until I really have a strong feeling that a better composition is identified, that I think, you know, we don't necessarily change it at this point in time. We might request that the staff go off and reconsider the changes. I think the mayor made some very good points tonight. And I'm not quite sure that we're ready for something to come back to us for the first reading. But maybe the staff goes off and takes our guidance and brings back with what they think would answer our questions, provide things more in line with what we're talking about. At that point, we might be able to say, wow, we're getting real close. Make a few updates and then bring it back to us for, you know, the first reading. I just think we're still too far apart. I do feel this committee is important for the reasons I said initially. And so I think for the most part, that's where I would be. Unless I hear more from either the council tonight or maybe city staff tonight, that would convince me to, you know, send it for update and a first reading. So I'll leave it at that. Again, I'm not with previous experience on the ERC. So I do admit to that limitation. So, thank you, council, for all your various comments. I have been listening attentively, trying to bring them together in a way that speaks to me. So thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for those very thoughtful remarks, Councilmember Willie. You know, I will call on you, Councilmember Moore. But with regard to trying to take the temperature of the council, I think with my secondor, not really as interested in composition and more interested in possibly scope, and a couple of comments basically from our Zoom participants on council, you know, kind of relaying some reservations. You know, I think it really does make sense at this point to essentially pull this item. I'll go ahead and move my motion off the table. And I am hearing some really good thoughts on, you know, potentially looking at this again in the future and examining scope. But I think that beyond being a very good discussion, and I think, you know, there are a lot of valid points, you know, being relayed here. And I hope that we gave, you know, some color, if you will, to the internal workings of the Environmental Review Committee. And, you know, Councilmember Moore, when you allude to your tutorial of Environmental Review Committee duties and that scope, I remember that very clearly because I was the council designee at the time. And of course, you were the person from the planning commission. And I think we elected you chair right out, right? And that was the first task that you had put up there. So I think it is very valid to consider that there may be considerable added value in terms of these different perspectives. But perhaps this question is not really ripe right now for certainly support on modifications. And so before we move on from it, let me provide Councilmember Moore an opportunity to speak her thoughts. And Vice Mayor, perhaps you have some thoughts as well. But my inclination is to table and work with staff to see, you know, if there's something that we can do to be perhaps bringing it back, you know, in a different format based upon our discussion here tonight. So Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paul. And I think that would probably be a good idea. I did just forward you an email that I had sent to the previous mayor from in 2019. So I think you were actually in the meeting with the manager, Deb Vang, at that time. And we were, we had pretty good support for the idea of increasing the scope. And I do have a quote, so this, I wrote July 12th, 2019. But there's a quote from our planning commission attorney that it says, "At its June 20th, that would be 2019, meeting, the ERC discussed proposing some changes to Chapter 2.84 of the municipal code, which establishes the ERC to add procedural guidelines and grant the ERC the power to make recommendations to the council on any project that could impact the city or its residents. While as a threshold matter, such changes would be within the council's power to adopt with the caveat that the city attorney office would need to review any such proposed changes before council's consideration. Chapter 2.84 does not give the ERC the power to recommend changes to the municipal code. Thus, if you as chair of the ERC want to ask the mayor or the planning commission chair to bring these proposed amendments to their bodies for consideration, you could do so, although this request should come from an individual ERC." you could do so, although this request should come from an individual ERC member, et cetera." So I did make the request. And so as you know, as time has gone on, it's now modified to not scope, but who's on it. And so I think it'd be a good item to bring back and think about. That's the scope there. And really, an issue is, you want people who are interested in the topic, that will go and read into these environmental documents and want to make some comments. So that was the idea. And with regards to Lehigh, and you know, it's just something we can talk about whether or not it's going to provide provide us with a benefit or not. But with regards to Lehigh, there is an expected EIR that they were supposed to have produced, which is kind of stalled off. So that, there is a document supposedly that's moving along that could be reviewed by the ERC if the scope was changed. Also, one thing that's kind of unusual about the ERC, when you very strictly look at what's in the municipal code, is that we simply make a choice, a determination for the mitigated negative declaration, which is that there are significant impacts, but they can be mitigated. Whereas, so there is going to be mitigation. Whereas if you have an environmental impact report and go the EIR route, you can have significant unavoidable impacts that cannot be mitigated, but the project will still be approved. Yeah. So, yeah, I would like it to come back. I think that would be, I think, and I think for public education on the topic, it could be really useful.
Okay, great. Thanks, Councilmember Moore.
Mayor, a brief point of clarification.
Yes, City Attorney Johnson.
Yeah. So I just wanted to remind the council that the second part of the motion that council adopted in February was to bring the scope back after the committee is reconstituted. So.
Okay.
But of course, if council's going in a different direction, then that would have, that discussion would have to be done differently.
Okay. So just to clarify, Chris, the non-changing of the composition doesn't preclude the second part from coming back, right?
Sorry, maybe I misspoke. The council actually referred it to the committee. But if the first step of modifying the composition of the committee doesn't happen, then I, you know.
Right, right, right. Okay, I remember this now. Right. You know, and I think the logic was basically, it's going to be easier to reconsider the scope of the committee if, you know, essentially you had two publicly elected officials and one of the appointees. Whereas, you know, there might be a little bit of inertia from an internal, you know, staff-based perspective to kind of expand that scope because of, you know, various reasons. But I mean, I think that was kind of the logic behind it. But, I mean, do you have a thought on that? I mean, it certainly should be possible to reconsider the scope with the current composition of the committee, shouldn't it?
The mayor or two council members could put it on an agenda for council to discuss, yes.
Irrespective, right? I mean, that could just get onto an agenda. Okay, good point.
Or put it on a list of future agenda items.
Right, right. Okay, Vice Mayor, I'm trying to be assiduous of time. You know, and just from a purely, you know, kind of selfish perspective, I'd like us to try to wrap around 11 if possible today. And so I do ask that you keep your final remarks succinct here. So.
Could Councilmember Moore email that email to the city clerk? So it's written comment for the record and get forwarded to all of us? And it seems, shouldn't we have a motion that we, this item be brought back with proposed scope change and potential membership?
Yeah, I'm not sure that's within the scope of what's noticed, frankly.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, so that is not within the scope of this agenda item. You know, as I mentioned earlier, if you wanted to include it as on a list of future agenda items, either the mayor or two other council members can add that list.
Okay, great. Well, thanks very much. Good discussion. Let's go on to item number 15 at this time. Item number 15 has to do with Economic Development Committee. And so here, we're not challenged with the current charter of composition because frankly, there is none. So the subject in full is consideration of municipal code amendments to the Cupertino Municipal Code, Title II, to add Chapter 2.96 and codify the Economic Development Committee. I understand that we have, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moore, what was that?
Sorry, Mayor Paul, but I feel as though we've seen this report already.
You've seen what report?
I think it's because it's been on our agenda for a good bit of time.
Okay, thank you very much. So let me go back to the announcement of the item. So the presenter from our staff is Tina Kapoor, Economic Development Manager. And let me see if anybody is here. Diane, did you want to introduce Tina or anything like that? I understand that she has a five-minute presentation to provide us here for this item.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I will just introduce Tina Kapoor, our Economic Development Manager, who is still fairly new to the city, but has gotten up to speed quickly and is doing great work. So with that, Tina. Thank you, Diane. And I was just on camera. And now Zoom is giving me an error message, so I'm sorry if you don't see me for some reason. We do have a quick five-minute presentation. We've all seen this before, so I'll make it very brief. And let me see if I can share my screen here.
Well, if Zoom's giving you video problems, Tina, maybe let me try to see if I can pull up the presentation for you.
Thank you. It says Zoom is unable to detect a camera.
Yeah, give me one second here.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mayor.
No worries.
Mayor, I can bring that up.
Oh, I have it up, but either way, Kirsten, if, so let me try to see if we can share the screen here. And I will try to expand it if possible. So can everyone see this in a larger format now? Nope, can't do that. Oh, there we go. Does that help?
I can see it.
You can see it. Okay. Yeah, just let me know when to proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina, Economic Development Manager. And we're here today, as Mayor mentioned, to discuss the proposed ordinance for the Economic Development Committee. The staff report and the ordinance are attached with the agenda in the presentation. Again, we have heard this before, so I'll keep it very brief as I cover some background, proposed composition and purpose of this committee. So next page.
Whoops. Let me see if I can.
There we go.
There you go.
So as we shared at one of the recent council meetings, this committee has met informally for a very long time. And as part of the 2021 City Work Program, council has requested that the Muni Code is amended to codify this committee. And so February 15th was the first time when we brought this item to council. And then on May 19th, we were given further direction to form the committee comprised of two members of city council, two commissioners, and five members of business community, which will represent the retail, hospitality, technology, commercial, real estate, and education sectors. Council also directed staff to include an optional majority residency requirement for this committee. Next page. And so just a quick refresher, this committee historically discussed items of importance for local businesses and provided feedback on business-related initiatives and projects that cities working on, you know, around partnerships, relationships to promote a strong economy. Next slide. Again, this is based on the survey that staff had conducted a few months back. We've gone over this information, and it's also included in the report. But this kind of shows the composition of commissions and committees in other cities. Next slide. And so similar to the role of the committee in the past, this is what the proposed purpose of this new committee is, is recommended to be, which is to provide expertise and guidance on policy related to economic development, also to actively promote Cupertino as a location of choice for current and prospective businesses. And this purpose can be carried out, again, in three ways listed here. One would be to make recommendations on a broad range of strategic matters related to, again, economic development goals for the city. Members can also serve as ambassadors to shed a positive light on the city by sharing resources, information with prospective businesses and stakeholders. And lastly, the committee will encourage public-private partnerships and identify potential resources to further cities' economic development goals. Next slide. And so taking into account council's direction on the composition of this committee, the proposed membership, as you can see here, includes two city council members, one commissioner from the Sustainability Commission, and one from the Technology, Information, and Communications Commission, as well as the five industry sectors that I mentioned before. So the committee will have a total of nine members, as shown here. Next slide. And so with that, our recommendation today is that council conducts the first reading of this ordinance to codify the Economic Development Committee. And next slide, and I think that's it. Yep. Thank you so much again for the opportunity to present, and we're here if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much, Tina. Let's go to our members of the public for a comment on the presentation and the item. I don't see anybody with their hands raised right now. And so, well, Tina, let me thank you for your work done on this. It's great to have at least a proposed charter here in the ordinance. And so let's go ahead and bring this over to our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, did anyone email in or provide a blue card for the record on this item?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. So let's go to our council members that are on Zoom. Councilmember Willie Away, any initial comments or questions on this proposal in front of us here? And I see Councilmember Willie with a hand raised, followed by Councilmember Away.
Yeah, just to flag you. Thank you, Mayor. I think at this time, like on the last item, without particular expertise, I'll be listening to the other councilmen that are more involved with this and what their recommendations are and justification.
Sounds good. Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Let's go to Councilmember Away next.
So my question is, the staff that's going to be working with this committee, would that be our economic director? Or, because I don't see staff on this composition. So my question is, who are the staff that's going to, you know, work with this committee?
I believe the Economic Development Manager would staff this. But correct me if I'm wrong on that, Tina or someone from staff.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely correct, Mayor. And in the proposed ordinance, it does mention the Economic Development Manager will be, will not be on the committee, but will be supporting the committee as a staff member.
Right.
That's great, because I think our economic director would be, should really be here to advise. And also, you know, report back on what's been going on with the economic development, with the city. So, yeah, I remember the old, it used to be the economic director is one of the voting members. But I guess we prefer just for staff support instead of having the staff on as a voting committee member.
Yeah, I don't believe staff is, not in the proposed ordinance. Staff does not vote on any of the action items.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Yeah. Vice, let's see, let's go to Councilmember Moore and then Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Moore.
Okay. So it's my understanding that we're looking at either option A or option B. We had made some previous choices. So it's the nine-member committee. And the difference being, for option A, you've got committee members shall be Cupertino residents or own a business or be currently employed at a business or organization located within the city of Cupertino. Option B, same composition. It then states for option B that it would be at least two industry sector representative committee members shall be Cupertino residents. So there's just a slight difference in the wording there. So I'd like to hear what the other council members think about these two options.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow.
Okay, so two council members are residents. I think sustainability commissioner has to be resident. Tick commissioner has to be resident too, right? I'm not really sure about that.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. So there would be at least six residents.
So at least four are residents. And then out of the other four industry representatives, we are saying, so the option is three will be resident? Or two?
Two.
So right now, it's two. But the option in the staff report says three, so it's either two or three, we should decide. I mean, okay. My question is really, I realize that I think out of the strategic, strategic plan that was drafted and adopted in 2016, there were three items that the Economic Development Committee chose to pursue. One is mobile vendors, and there is an innovative zone. And then there's some, a third one, I forgot. I think all of those have been to do with falls under Planning Commission. And then that was referred later to Planning Commission. And then I realized Planning Commission is now one of the members. I'm just throwing out that as a question for other council members to ponder. I wonder what you think about that. But I can see that with tick commission, they likely will have tech experience. And if we want to grow our economic sector in technology, information, that might be helpful. And sustainability commission? I'm guessing we could grow in green. Energy area. Yeah, so they all kind of make sense. I'm not sure. Just throwing out that as a question. Okay.
I think that, let me go backwards with regard to the requests out there for feedback from council. I mean, with regard to the residency requirement, I think that, you know, option B gives us a little bit more flexibility. I'm trying to glean what the staff recommendation actually states. It seems to say that, I'm reading the staff recommendation document. It says excluding the two council members serving on the committee, at least three additional members must be residents of Cupertino. And I'm wondering what our requirements are on sustainability and tick. What we had just mentioned a moment ago is that we believe that those are Cupertino residents. I was about to pull up the municipal code, but I didn't have the time to do that, to verify that both tick and all sustainability members have to be residents. If that's the case, then yes, then you have four that have to be Cupertino residents as a matter of course. And then, but it does look like the option that is baked into the proposed draft ordinance as option A or option B, option A basically says that everybody has to be a resident of Cupertino. Option B says that up to three people don't need to be residents of Cupertino. And specifically out of the non-council and commission members. So out of the five, out of the so-called, like, you know, sectors of business or the other identified areas, three of them don't need to be city, I'm sorry, Cupertino residents. And so I would err, I would actually lean towards the side of flexibility to allow us, you know, to draw, to cast a wider net, because I know a lot of people are involved in our city that don't necessarily live here, but also have, you know, significant activities here as well, or might live very close, for instance. So, Chris, you're looking over, did you want to say something with regard to, I think, maybe the residency issues?
Yeah, no, I misspoke earlier. There, it is possible to have somebody who's not a Cupertino resident on the Sustainability Commission.
That's what I was thinking.
That's not the case on the tick. They must be residents. But so, so you could have up to four non-residents.
Right. Yeah. So as written, option B basically ensures a majority of residents still.
Correct.
As a minimum, there'd have to be five. So, those would be the two council members, the one tick commissioner, as well as the other two from the other five that wouldn't necessarily have to be, or that would have to be from Cupertino, that would have to live here. So, okay, so, yes, that does preserve the majority. You know, I'm okay with the staff recommendation and option B, you know, frankly. And then, so I think that covers Councilmember Moore's question. In terms of, kind of, thinking about other types of representatives, I think that the composition that we have selected right now, you know, is perfectly fine. I like the idea of our sustainability appointee or one of them, you know, on it, because it is a very strong value of the community as reflected in, you know, a lot of the positions that we take. It's interesting that there's an education representative, but I mean, of course, education is extremely valuable in our city, and it also is actually a pretty strong force in our business sector as well. So, I would say, right now, my preference would be just to go ahead with what is, what is there and has been thought out, and is, would then be charged, frankly. Because, you know, when we talk about voting, we talk about procedures of the former Economic Development Committee, I think it's all in a bit of a vacuum, because none of that was written down. You know, none of that was actually formalized. So, it was sort of like, you know, we don't really know who's the chair. We don't know what the meeting procedures were. We don't really know who a member was or what a voting member meant, you know, precisely. So, here we do. So, my tendency is to go ahead and say, you know, let's try this out. If it doesn't work, you know, after, say, a cycle or a couple of years, then, you know, there's always the ability to modify according to experience. So, those are my tendencies there. And if there are any other people that would like to, you know, kind of put in that input prior to entertaining a motion, I'd be happy to, you know, bring some. Are you going to entertain a motion, Councilmember Moore? Okay, so, let's do that, and that doesn't cut off discussion. So, Councilmember Moore, bring forth your motion.
I'll see, okay. Not really sure how we're going to do this, because we have the option B item there. So, let's see. I move that ordinance number 22-2240 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof, with option B being the selected, the selected composition option, so that we are, we are doing the recommended action to conduct the first reading of ordinance number 22-2240, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, adding chapter 2.96 of Title II Administration and Personnel to codify the Economic Development Committee, and to find that the proposed actions are exempt from sequest. I might have done that a little bit out of order, but, so that, again, that I move that ordinance number 22-2240 be read by title only, and that the city clerk's reading constitute the first reading thereof.
I think your motion was clear, if, you know, maybe one's repetitive on some of the items. But, in any event, it's clear you're, we're moving the recommended action, option B. And so, if no one volunteers to second, I'll go ahead and second it. Vice Mayor, you have your hand raised, did you want to second this? Please turn on your microphone to, yeah.
I'll second, but I do have a question.
Okay, so, we have a second from Vice Mayor Chow, and Vice Mayor Chow is requesting to deliberate on the motion.
Yeah, so, for option B, I mean, option A says that committee members shall be Cupertino residents or own a business or be currently employed at a business organization located within the city of Cupertino. For option B, it just says at least two industry-sector representative committee members shall be Cupertino residents. But then, it did not require them to be employed in a Cupertino business or own a Cupertino business. It seems that should still be required, right? We don't want someone from Fremont to be sitting in our committee. Their business may be in Fremont or Auckland.
Right, so, let me, I'm just trying to pull that part of the language here. So, we've got, gosh, where are the alternatives here? Can someone give me a super-pagedated reference? 1029, oh, okay, for some reason, I'm a few pages off of that. Okay, so, option A, under section B. Okay, so indeed, it does say shall be Cupertino residents or own a business or be currently employed at a business organization located within Cupertino. So, that actually leaves the opportunity for you not to be a resident of Cupertino, like you're pointing out. Whereas, option B says at least two industry-sector representatives, representative committee members shall be Cupertino residents, I see. Well, I guess, you know, this is a way of parsing this. You know, option, option B does seem to provide us some more alternatives. It doesn't mean that if the will of the majority is to, you know, go ahead and try to preserve the local connection, that that's not something that can be, you know, honored. But, I am trying to think about.
Can I suggest an amendment?
Well, let me, let me.
I do have one more question, yeah.
I'm just getting the sense that you had a point to set across, that perhaps you're not saying.
Yeah, only, I think, to address the vice mayor's concern that council appoints the members of this committee, so presumably, it wouldn't be in council's interest to appoint somebody with no connection to the city.
Right, right, okay, so, yeah, I'll just, you know, basically fall back on my point about flexibility there. But, Vice Mayor, you had indicated that you want to propose an amendment to the motion, is that right?
Yeah, but I first have a question. So, education sector, my initial first reaction was, oh, employee of a school agency, a public school agency, but then, we have a lot of after-school organizations in Cupertino who offer from class, from after-school classes to even, even Kung Fu classes, right? Dance classes, so are they, I assume they are considered education sector representative, right? So, it's not just public agency, education sector?
I don't see education defined here.
Yeah, it's not defined, so.
Well, I think these are general guidelines, right, in terms of.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. So, then, I would just propose this amendment. Just adding this part from option A, but I didn't include the Cupertino resident part. So, this industry representative shall own a business or currently be employed at a Cupertino business. And at least two industry-sector representative committee members shall be Cupertino residents. Or, maybe we don't want to be so strong, maybe encouraged, or?
Yeah, no, this is, this is an ordinance, Vice Mayor, you want to.
Yeah, okay.
You want to direct, you don't want to suggest. Okay, so, let me, let me just check in with the movement. Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to make this modification to your motion that you see on the screen?
Industry representatives would own a business or be currently employed. So, one of the bits of information that I would actually like to hear from somebody who lives in Cupertino and is representing one of these industries, so the retail hospitality, education, commercial real estate, and tech. But, they're, they're working outside of the city. I'd like to hear, in particular, perhaps, somebody who's, who's running retail somewhere else, any kind of retail or tech, what their experiences are in another city for why their business is there rather than here. So, there's some information that if we are just looking in, looking at Cupertino, that we might be missing some information for, you know, why, why did you choose to be in Campbell? Why did you choose to be, you know, in Milpitas or Mountain View? So, I mean, there are, there's, that's why it's kind of a, it's a tough choice between option A and B, what we have here, I'm not sure about the modification, because I can see pluses and minuses for each. But, I do kind of like the idea of getting, if somebody's living here, working elsewhere, I'd like to know why, and they might have some insights for what we can be doing better here to attract their business to our location. There might be some good points to learn.
Can I respond?
Yeah, let me just interject that, again, this is a matter of flexibility. This doesn't require that you choose someone who doesn't have a business in Cupertino, right? It's just a matter of whether you'd like to keep that option open. So, I would say that, you know, I, I, I think that it's a good thing that we're looking at this and kind of moving around the contours of it. You can't anticipate any, you know, every, every, every requirement and, you know, kind of second guess all of the various ways in which it might be undesirable or, you know, some eventual, eventuality might occur based upon the permissions. But, as Chris pointed out, it's unlikely in most instances, or really in all of them, that if someone has absolutely no connection to the city, that you would choose them to be on the committee. So, I would, I would suggest that we go with the more flexible option right now, rather than try to, you know, go down the road of carving out why the less flexible option would possibly be more palatable in every situation, because I think we just can't anticipate every situation, but we can provide ourselves some more flexibility. So, you know, Councilmember Moore, I'm not hearing an acceptance of the proposed amendment, but Vice Mayor did indicate.
Mayor Paul, can we pull it up again? Let's take a look.
It's not on my screen, so Vice Mayor would have to.
Okay, so, I'll share, can I first respond? I think, yeah, it's important to learn how people choose different locations, but then, they don't have to be on the committee. They can invite, they can be invited to talk to the committee. And we can invite multiple of this kind of person to talk about how they choose their location. So, but then, they don't have to be voting members. So, I have changed that, so it's more flexible. It is preferred that industry representatives own a business or be employed in Cupertino, so.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's hear from some other, you know, people that have their hands raised. I have a hand raised from Tina Kapoor. Before I call her Tina, I just point out, Vice Mayor, I'll repeat what I told you earlier. I don't think you should put a preference in there. I mean, it really doesn't have any meaning when you're imparting it into an ordinance. So, Tina, and then we'll go.
For the applicants, they know the expectation.
Still don't think you should be in an ordinance, so Tina, and then Councilmember Away.
Thanks, Mayor Paul. I just wanted to address what Councilmember Moore brought up, because I do think it's an important point, and we, you know, ourself in this field of work, we want to know why businesses are locating in Cupertino or outside Cupertino. But, I just want to point out that, you know, having the commercial real estate representative could be that answer for us. They, you know, usually typically represent a lot of different businesses who may be putting roots down in different places, and they have good information for us to understand. So, really good point, and I think we are covered with having that real estate perspective.
Okay, thank you, Tina, and next we have Councilmember Away.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I do like the flexibility, because, you know, it depends on the applicants. We could find one, really dynamic one, who is not, doesn't have a business here. But, we are in the ordinance stating that at least, in addition to the two council members, at least three has to be Cupertino residents. So, I think that it basically covers, you know, the Cupertino-centric Economic Development Committee. And I understand Vice Mayor Chow's concerns, but when we are making decisions, we could, you know, it doesn't have to be in the ordinance. I think it's pretty common sense for us to want to appoint people who are relating to Cupertino. So, I see flexibility as a very, it gives us more options.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilmember Away. And I'll remind everyone, we do have the motion by Councilmember Moore on the table with the second by Vice Mayor Chow. And so, I don't see any further hands raised. I will go ahead and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call vote after conducting the first reading of the ordinance.
So, Mayor, was the friendly amendment declined by?
There's no friendly amendment on the table, you know, because it was not taken up by the movement or the seconder.
Okay, that was my question, thank you. Yes, so, this is the first reading of ordinance number 22-2240, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, adding chapter 2.96 of Title II Administration and Personnel to codify the Economic Development Committee. And also, Mayor, may I confirm if council is finding that the proposed actions are exempt from sequest?
Oh, yes, that was part of the motion, Madam City Clerk. And Madam City Clerk, if you could conduct a roll call vote on this motion, thank you.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Away?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. We're on to item number 16, the last enumerated item on our agenda. Item number 16 has to do with voting delegates to the League of California Cities Meeting, which is taking place on September 7th through September 9th of this year. And so, I'll go ahead and ask our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, I take it you have a brief comment on it? Or did that pretty much cover the?
Yes, that just, councilmembers are going to be attending the conference September 7th through the 9th in Long Beach, and the annual business meeting that is held during the conference requires delegate assignment and up to two alternates in order to vote and consider CalCity policies.
Understood, okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'll go to our members of the public. If anyone has a comment on this, I don't see any hands raised. And Madam City Clerk, are there any emails, are there, you know, any, any, any blue cards on this item? Okay, thank you, Madam City Clerk. And so, I see a hand raised from Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Moore, did you want to propose a delegate or, and/or up to two, well, no, a delegate and up to two alternates?
Yes, I would like to suggest our delegate be Mayor Paul and the alternate be Vice Mayor Chow. And I don't know if you need two alternates, but just for the delegate and the alternate.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Would anyone like to second that motion by Councilmember Moore? To have me as the delegate and the vice mayor as the alternate. Councilmember Away, your hand is raised, would you like to second?
I'll second.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion requested? I don't see any hands raised. Okay, well, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote on this motion, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Away?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. Okay, oral communications did not need to be continued, and so, we're on to council and staff comments and future agenda items prior to adjournment. And so, I'll just remind everyone, we're allocating a couple minutes each for this one. So, let's, let's go to our Zoom participants here from council. So, actually, let me go to our acting city manager, Diane Thompson, first. Did you have any staff comments on behalf of the staff at this point, Diane?
No, I don't have any comments at this time, thank you.
Great, well, thanks for sticking with us throughout the meeting, Diane. It's great to see your cherry face the whole time, so, thanks for being here. So, Councilmember Away or Councilmember Willie? Any future agenda items that you'd like to request at this time? So, Councilmember Away and then Councilmember Willie.
Yes, I would like to propose a future, like a study session, just, maybe just for. Yes, I would like to propose a future, like a study session, just, maybe just for my information, or, because I, I think most of us receive some emails from, you know, residents that saying that the code enforcement is pretty erratic, and I don't understand the code enforcement's, uh, procedures, so maybe we could have a study session on it and really, really understand how code enforcement works, if, uh, our, uh, you know, Cupertino three-one-one could supplement it, you know, something in that nature. So at least the council and residents can understand how to approach it, what can we do about it, so that, that, it doesn't have to immediate, but that's one thing on my mind that I think it's worth a study session to understand it, both, um, as me, as a council member, and also, um, residents' perspectives.
Okay, thank you for the suggestion and the request, Councilmember Wei. I've, uh, made note of it. I think that's a, a, a good idea, actually. I, I don't re, I don't recall a code enforcement study session since I've been on here, and I think that probably the time is quite ripe for it. Diane, you have your hand raised. Did you want to speak to that request?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment on that. Um, we've received the same, um, suggestion from another council member recently, and it's a good idea. Um, and because our agendas are going to be really tight, I think, for the next month or so, it may be that we can't get to that quickly. However, within the next, um, week and a half or so, um, I'm preparing a memo, actually, Public Works is prepar, or not Public Works, um, I'm going to ask, um, our code enforcement group to prepare a memo explaining our process. And so in the short term, we can, um, provide that to council. That may answer the questions, or it may spark more interest in a study session. So at least it's a starting point of something that we can do soon later.
Indeed. Uh, thank you for that input, Diane. Uh, very good. So let's go on to Councilmember Willie at this time.
So I support that request, so I think that gets us to two. And, uh, that's all I have for this evening.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Willie. And let's go up to the dais, either Councilmember Moore, then Vice Mayor Chow, Councilmember Moore.
Um, thank you. So I, I want to kind of add on to that request, um, for, um, the, the intake of, um, public, uh, I don't want to say complaints, but, uh, issues, um, and how we're, how those, um, get handled. I'd, I'd actually like to hear some, um, comments from the public for what their experiences has been like, um, whether they use the three-one-one or they're emailing council directly, and what our best practices can be, um, moving forward, because, uh, when we get an email blast essentially to the entire council, uh, from an individual with regarding a complaint, it's kind of hard to, um, uh, figure out exactly what the, the best, uh, response is to that. And we don't want to have duplication where we have five members of council in, in, um, emailing, uh, the same, um, person over the same issue, and it, there's redundancy built in with that. Um, now, I, I did mention the CARES, um, uh, event, and that I would like to see, um, a, a review of, uh, our, in, um, emergency management, um, process, so that we can be uh, all informed of what the city will do in the event of an emergency, the, with regards to how the EOC works, and, um, uh, with our, um, radio operators as well, with their mobile vehicle and all that. I think it would be really helpful and educational, and, and you, we can touch on, um, earthquake preparedness as well, uh, just, uh, kind of remind everybody about what we're supposed to be doing, and, um, and get some updates about the block program and neighborhood watch. I think that might help. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thanks for throwing that last part in there, um, with block leader program and neighborhood watch, um, because they're all under that one e just right now, so great. Um, Vice Mayor Chow.
I thought the emergency coordinator, block leader update, those are in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two work program. And, but it's true, I have not gotten an update, right?
Hmm, yeah, well, well, let's go back and check that out. So, so, uh, very briefly, I do see a hand raised from our city manager. Diane, did you want to speak to anything that, sorry about that, Vice Mayor Chow, but let me go back to see if our city manager wanted to speak to anything that, uh, Councilmember Moore.
I'm sorry, I, um, I had left my hand up, but, um, certainly if the council's interested in those study sessions, we can get them on the calendar.
Got it, okay, okay, great. And, and, uh, Councilmember Wei, you had your turn, so I'm not sure if your hand is raised from before or, okay, all right.
Yes, I, I do have one more.
Oh, you do have one more? Okay, well, let me get to Vice Mayor Chow first, and then, um, you know, we'll get back to you.
So I think we need the assignment of members to Economic Development Committee at one point. And then the scope of, uh, the Environmental Review Committee should come back. And, uh, I think we, I mentioned earlier the membership for the City Hall Subcommittee. That should be assigned. And, uh, and, yeah, I think we are getting, people are emailing us with different issues from bike paths to shops that need to be cut, to things left over on the street that they didn't leave, but then they got, um, uh, cited for something left by someone else. So, so, so many issues, I'm losing track of them. So I wonder if, um, we could have a system so that we, maybe end of every month, we can have a spreadsheet of the different issues, and then what are the responses? I think that would be helpful for all the council members and the, the public to know what, um, yeah, okay, so. And one possible way could be, when we respond, we can email Deborah, who can collect and be, be the point to coordinate all the responses. Then if someone has responded, then other council members don't have to spend time on that. That would be great, yeah.
Um, okay, well, thank you very much, Vice Mayor Chow. I don't have, uh, future agenda items here, so, um, we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, the end of the meeting, although Councilmember Wei did indicate that she wanted to add one more item. Councilmember Wei, what was the item that you wanted to add?
Actually, I, I understand we have tight agendas, but just a, um, thought, there's so much gun violence recently. I really would like to bring back, if we have time in the future, the safe storage of guns in Cupertino. I, I think it's important as a preventive thing, so that we don't have that, even have a chance of that to happen accidentally in Cupertino. It just, the gun violence is just breaks people's hearts. So I'm hoping that when we have time, we can bring that back. It is one of our, um, city work plan. Um, I'm hoping that it gets a little bit of priority, um, when we have agenda items times available.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Wei. And Vice Mayor Chow, you had indicated that you wanted to add something else as well.
Oh, just a question. Should, should we get second for each of these, or are we assuming these are all consensus?
Well, so for instance, uh, the code enforcement item went ahead and had the, so, so, so this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to, so for example, just going through your requests, assignment of members to Economic Development Committee, we have to go through second reading first, right? Obviously, that has to pass. The scope of Environmental Review Committee, I, 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 or Subcommittee, rather, that has already been covered, and we're going to bring that back as a follow-on to the Subcommittee request. Um, the, the City Hall Subcommittee composition, same thing. A lot of residents' issues and updates on various issues. I mean, I, 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 without getting into the deliberative process, I think that each of these, um, will be reviewed with the city manager and city attorney in my next meeting, and we'll see what the timing looks like, uh, on each of them. So, you know, and not all of them have the same status, right? As, you know, Councilmember Wei pointed out, uh, her last request actually is on the work plan, so we'll kind of figure out where everything fits, um, and, and based upon our scheduling. So, um, yeah, thanks for the question, but, uh, without, uh, uh, w- without putting too fine a point of it, you know, we have, we do have a very full, um, you know, uh, list of things that we're um, going to get to, and, uh, we'll do our very best to, you know, follow up on uh, most, or all, if not most of these, uh, in the relatively near-term, term future. So, um, thank you very much, everyone. Um, good meeting tonight. Uh, hope that the rest of, um, the first half of your July goes well, and we are going to go ahead and adjourn this special meeting, and we will see you for our regularly scheduled council meeting on July nineteenth. Thank you very much again. Um, good night, and the meeting is adjourned.